All right, let the committee hold meeting for Monday, May 19, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gavino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gailey.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Yeah, here.
Trustee Nedjbedj.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Great, thank you. Audience comments this time? Seeing non-trustee comments. Discussion item one, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one tonight is a water agreement with Perla. Perla is a company that is looking to occupy the warehouse building that is across from Oberweis at the corner of Ice Cream Drive and Randall Road. Perla is a food producer, so they will be using a substantial amount of water per day. As the board might recall, we recently approved the agreement for a water impact fee with Aurora Pack, and part of that water impact agreement also has certain provisions. As Aurora Pack was going through the process, Perla came to us when also looking to use a substantial amount of water, so they're basically getting the same agreement that Aurora Pack went through. Just a couple of highlights of this agreement tonight is their average daily usage is roughly around 49,000 gallons a day. Their max daily usage, so that'd be the maximum they plan to ever use in a day, is just over 69,000 gallons a day. The impact fee as part of this agreement is, just like Aurora Pack, it's paid half up front. So upfront, Aurora Packs wasn't exactly half, but this one is half. So the half fund upfront is they'll pay an impact fee of $437,715.50. The full amount to be paid after the second year is expected to be $875,431 or less, depending on if they use less water then. So if you remember, the way we did it was, we know they're going to use a certain amount, so that's the base, and then the second year, we check their water usage in that second year, and they have their maximums here. Whatever falls between that maximum and that lower number is what they pay the second year. So it could be less than 875 total, but that's the highest anticipated impact fee. Same thing with the Aurora Pack agreement. We have provisions, just like them. If they use a certain amount of water in one day and it puts an impact on our system, we have the ability to shut down their water supply. It's not our intent, it's probably never going to happen hopefully, but it just gives us a reassurance that we can, you know, shut their water down if it becomes an issue for like fire safety or things like that. Our intent with this is also to set up communication channels, so the agreement spells out how we would tell them about things like water main breaks and whatnot to try to keep them informed. Basically, that's it in a nutshell, so it protects the village, it has a water impact agreement fee, but it also gives them some assurances that we'll work with them and not just shut their water off arbitrarily.
Steve, I think my biggest concern is how much water we have to give out, and is it, are we pretty secure in knowing that that's not going to impact the water supply to the degree that it hurts the residents?
Yeah, 100%. That is a valid question, and that's the reason that we're getting to the end of a study with EEI, who's doing a two-year master study of our water system. We're hoping that we actually have an update to the board this summer, if not June, I think was their current date, that we're meeting this week, actually, to go over the final draft results. But as part of that, we know how much water we have in storage right now, which is 1.5 million gallons of water. With the new tower that's being built, we'll have 2.75 million gallons of water. On an average day, currently, we produce about 2 million gallons of water. So we're at that point with Aurora Pack and with this, we should still have, when that new tower's built, enough water just in towers alone to cover our daily average. Now, in the summertime, our production does go over 3 million gallons a day. So there are times when it could be detrimental, so to speak, that we don't have 100% storage in the air, but all six of our wells are on, we're finishing up a $600,000 SCADA project right now. We already have alarm set, but the new system's even more integrated, where wells kick on automatically, there's presets in all the towers. So when we run low, the wells just kick on and refill the towers. The issue is, is when you get to a capacity where you're actually producing so much water the wells can't keep up or provide enough water, and we're not there yet, we got, we're still very comfortable in that regard.
And the aquifers are adequately supplied? That's really my question addressed.
Correct. So the preliminary result of the study was they looked at future water source, and they're looking at things like Lake Michigan, they're looking at our current aquifer health, they're looking at other areas that we can buy water from, they're looking at the Fox River for the future. In all of the cases, what we've heard, and once again, this is just preliminary, is that the aquifer's health is a little better than we anticipated, so it's potential that we be able to stay on the aquifer for a little while longer before we have to decide whether or not to switch. So we're meeting again this week to go over that, but as far as I know, I mean, Brian's indication is it's been at least a few decades out, several decades out. And the big thing is this, all the towns that are getting off of Lake Michigan water, that had, or sorry, that are going onto Lake Michigan water south of us, when towns like Joliet who produce a gigantic amount of water compared to what we do daily get off the aquifer, it ends up allowing the aquifer's life to basically be longer for us. So with them switching, and I don't remember the number 100%, but I think it's like 150 gallons, a million gallons a day they produce, and we produce two to three, so with them off the aquifer, with Oswego, York, Phil, Montgomery, those towns going to Lake Michigan water, that actually has a better result for the aquifer life. But we should have that actual study result coming up in June or July.
So Steve, if we're waiting on these results, why are we having this discussion now? Because one of my concerns when I was looking at this is with Aurora Pack, they gave us initial projections and ended up coming back and almost doubling them. So how do we, you know, how confident are we in what they're projecting, and how confident are they in what they have projected?
Because our current capacity of what we can produce is well beyond what this will be with Aurora Pack and Perla. We have capacity right now to allow these to happen. So it's, there's two different things. You're looking at aquifer life, which is the long term, is there going to be water in the ground, versus the short term, which is can we actually produce the daily amount of water needed for the businesses in the community? Right now, we can produce the amount of water with Perla, Aurora Pack, new housing developments. We have enough capacity at our treatment plants and our six wells and our towers to provide that now, so with, even with these agreements. So, but your point is valid, that's where the study comes in. At what point is our capacity overcome, to which case we have to talk about a different solution?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, you know, not have development and jobs come because of an infrastructure issue, but we have to, you know, think it through.
There is a clause in there too that says they may ask for more water, but we have the right to deny it. So they can ask to use more water, but we can tell them that we can't provide it for them. So both agreements have that clause in there. So if they choose to ask for more water, and we feel like we can't produce it for them, you know, we just tell them that this is, you're at your maximum now, and that's what you get.
Both agreements also provide that on any given day, if their water usage somehow puts the water usage of the residents at risk, we have the ability and the right to turn that off to those businesses, correct?
Yeah, so that, that and none is 30,000 gallons, and once again, no pun intended, to drop in the bucket, if we're producing 2 to 3 million gallons. So if they go over that, once they hit that caveat in one day, that's what gives us the right to say, whoa, hang on a second, what's going on differently today? Our meters are reading really high for your usage? And then they can say, oh, well, we're trying a new production line, we say, no, you can't. This is the maximum, you have to come back and request more, or we could shut your water off today.
I'm good, I mean.
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, item two, Steve.
Thank you. Item number two is a new development. Nathan has been discussing ways, as you know, we like to use concept plans, giving the board an opportunity to see something before it actually starts any plan commission processes. If we think that they're, in the past, we used to use concept plans, particularly when we thought the board might have questions or concerns and want to address them before they even submitted their full plan sets to the plan commission. Nathan's approach has been that with concept plans, if it's new construction and it's breaking ground and it's going to need a plan commission review, let's just take it to the board first anyways, just to give you an upfront in case you have concerns, and then they can provide that update to the plan commission as well. With that, this is a veterinary clinic that is looking to locate outside of Woodman's off of Oak Street, just east of Orchard. With that, Nathan?
Yeah, so the Coin Veterinary Clinic concept plant here is located on this lot here, which is one of the Woodman's Outlots, own B2. The current proposal is for an 8,500 square foot building, there it is, would house 11 exam rooms, surgical rooms, imaging, x-ray rooms, you know, state-of-the-art facility, have kennels for up to 20 animals. Our code only requires 23 spaces, and they have over 50, so they're really preparing for, you know, that full build-out. They do have some fenced-in areas here by the kennel room for outside area, you know, dog run type areas. The property would be connected through the existing access road here, and there's an existing cross-access with the dentist office there now, so they would connect into both of those here and here. The building looks very nice, they have some updated architectural renderings, you know, significant architectural feature there at the entryway with lots of glass. The PUD does require a 50-foot setback, which they meet, so there's no variances being requested through this. With the Woodman's PUD, they do have to go through site plan approval process, and a veterinary use is a special use, so they'd be coming in to get a special use for the veterinary clinic and getting site plan approval done. With that, I'll invite the applicant up to answer any questions.
Hello, good evening. I'm Luigi with RWE, I'm the architect for the project. Nothing to add more than what Nathan described, but happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Is it going to be open like 24/7?
No, not a 24/7 facility, no.
So it's open like eight-hour days?
Correct. I don't know, I don't know the exact hours, but it would be, you know, morning to, you know, probably 6:00 PM, then they would close.
Okay, that's all I hear. Dad?
I'm good, I like it, it looks pretty nice, you know, for, fits in that area.
Jason?
Yeah, I would say my only concern would be we already have at least two veterinary businesses in North Aurora, and we are a pretty small town, so obviously concern is hurting their business as well, so I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I love it, I think it's a beautiful building, I think it's a great location.
Mike?
You know, I think it's a good idea from the very start, so regardless of which plan.
Jason, I invite you to come to my neighborhood at 7:00 PM on any given evening, if you're wondering if there's enough pets to support this new veterinary clinic, so 7:00 PM is the dog walking hour where I live. And so, so as far as I'm concerned, this clinic, I love the way it looks, I love the idea of it, and also, I don't know of another one that's in that particular area, the ones that I know of are on really the other side of town, or they're not near there, so, I mean, yes, there's one down on Oak Street, but, I mean, I just think that there's enough pets around to support it.
And then there's one over by Taco Madre.
Appetition never hurt anybody.
Yeah. All right, yeah, it looks great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan, anything from us for that?
Nope. Thank you.
Item three, Steve.
Thank you. Item number three is a special use that went before the plan commission, it's coming before you tonight for review. This is in regards to a cannabis craft growing facility located off of, it's technically off of Poplar, but just off of Airport Road, just west of our police department. Nathan here is going to walk through our process with the plan commission, and upon your review tonight, it either goes forward to the board for a final vote or back with more discussion.
Okay, so this petition is for a special use permit for the existing structure at 220 Popular Place, so there's no site improvements involved with this, they'd be taking the existing empty vacant warehouse and converting it to a grow operation. So it is for, the special use is for a cannabis craft grower and a cannabis transporting operation, which are listed as special uses in the I-2 district. The building is 60,000 square feet, they'd have approximately 6,000 square feet of office, and then the rest dedicated to the growing operations and storage. The facility would have, you know, be upgraded for security to meet the requirements of the state act for cannabis, and I'll let the applicant talk a little bit about the security measures, because I won't do him justice. Hours of operation, you know, are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. This is not open to the public, so it's not like a dispensary, nobody can come here and buy cannabis, and it's employees only, and again, I'll let them explain the security, what you got to do to get in there. You know, it meets for parking and access, it meets all of those requirements out of the zoning code. The planning commission discussed it at their May 6 meeting, held a public hearing, and voted unanimously for approval. So with that, invite you up to explain a little bit on the security side of things.
Sure, I'm Tim Nitsch with GCF Industries, so my business partners over there, we're actually both lawyers. Prior to becoming a lawyer, I did access control systems for the Federal Reserve Bank, for the Shedd Aquarium, for big companies across the United States, so I actually designed the security system for this building. It has two levels of security, we have a monitored system for just a central station, if a door opens, if glass breaks, and then there's an access control system that'll control entry and exit from the building. So to enter the building, you have to have a background check with the Illinois State Police. We have an extensive camera system, right now, the current count is around 150 cameras, not including cameras in the grow rooms. Each grow room will have around 12 to 13 cameras. All those cameras are pulled back to the state police, they have full access to the facility and to all the cameras, so while it's not 24-hour monitoring of video, we do have the security system and also the access control system, so.
Is this the only, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Is this the only facility that you currently run of this nature?
No, we operate an infuser in Romeoville, so the infuser is making vapes, gummies, that kind of stuff. So if this is a very large craft grow, will be the largest craft grow in the state of Illinois, if it's built here.
And have you experienced any type of security problems, or where you've ever had to call the police, or anything like that down in the Joliet facility?
In Romeoville? No, we've not.
Romeoville, sorry.
I mean, honestly, all the cannabis is stored in a secured vault, on top of everything else, so anything that is harvested is actually in a secured vault. It's been our experience in the cannabis industry that people don't steal marijuana, they steal money. So if, like, when you break into dispensary in Chicago, they don't steal product, they steal the cash. So we don't have any cash on hand here. So by the time you got in and went through the masonry wall and got through the steel doors, I mean, we're two seconds away from the police department, so, yeah.
Sure, sure, okay, thank you.
Can you give us an idea of how it will benefit the village?
Yeah, so our business model revolves around high-paying jobs, we want to retain our employees, so.
How many?
30 to 50, $25 an hour with profit sharing for, we pay both sides of the 401K, we pay both sides of your insurance, you get three weeks of vacation. So we, this business, it's very difficult to find good people, so we want to retain all of our employees, so that's kind of our business model. Also, we want to be active members in the community. Obviously, we're not going to be the cannabis company, you know, building a park, but, you know, we want to donate probably through other entities that we have to make sure that the community really benefits from our operation.
Thank you. Are the people 24 hours a day, or just 10 hours or 8 hours?
By law, we can only operate Monday through Friday, Friday 8 to 5. We can't operate anywhere beyond that, and there's no consumption that's allowed on premises in any form.
Chief, any thoughts or any issues you have?
Originally, when, before VerLife came to town, I was a little skeptical, but just seeing what VerLife had to go through with the state police, and it's like Fort Knox, really solid people to deal with. I mean, I haven't seen the facility, I'm sure we'll get a tour.
It's like masonry, it's like a dream, right? So it's like masonry walls and no glass, no windows.
Right, so by the time somebody got to where they want to be, we'll.
As you already, I did prison security, and the windows are the worst thing, right? Because if they're going to do something, they're going to get through a window. There are no skylights, there's nothing.
All I would ask is before you opened, maybe some representatives of our agency can get a tour so we know what we're looking at.
Absolutely, and I would actually go further than that and say we'd want to grant you guys access, so if something did happen, you could immediately get in, so, yeah.
What about for the camera system?
The camera system, I can give you access to the camera system. We check with the state police to make sure they're okay, but I can't understand why they wouldn't. So, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Can we get a tour too?
Sorry?
Can we get a tour?
You guys need a tour before we open.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious. Well, that's kind of what I meant.
Actually, to go into the facility.
I'm curious as to what the facility or the physical plant looks like.
It's pretty cool, so, again, so my background is in access control, and I also do all the automation at the Shedd Aquarium, so it's really a big water quality project. So you're going to see tanks and pipes, and we have automatic watering systems, the lighting mimics the natural environment, we have fans that mimic the natural environment, we change the level of the lights, it's a pretty complex setup, so, yeah, we're more than happy to bring you guys through before we go live, so.
Laura?
I have no problem with it.
Jason?
There any added tax benefit to this, considering for sales there is, no?
I think all of the taxes collected at the dispensary, yes, I don't think any taxes collected at the grow.
I believe the county has a tax, I'll have to check though, some county, most counties have a 3% tax we pay to them, and then there's an additional grow tax we pay to the state of Illinois.
Dad?
I'm good, were there any concerns? I'm assuming not, that any of the surrounding businesses raised?
No.
Okay, yeah, I'm good, good with it.
Mark?
Good.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you. All right, item four, Gas and Wash Incentive Request, Steve?
All right, thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is an incentive request from Gas and Wash, as you know, Gas and Wash was approved by the village board back in December, they've been going through the process of, they've submitted their building permit, it's been under review, and as they've been going through their due diligence, once a project is approved, they have to go through the full engineering set with our engineers, and so that's WBK Engineering, our village engineer, Brandon Tonorelli, and going through it, they determined that the subject property is serviced by only one water main, and that water main is also what services Asbury Gardens. So part of our engineering review is that we tell the developer, hey, your size might be inadequate for the water flow, for certain cases. In this case, there were some concerns that during fire suppression operations, it could actually cause stress on the water main, it could actually cause the water main to burst. If there was a water main outage and we had to shut it off, you'd be shutting off the business, but you'd also be shutting off Asbury Gardens because the water main is not looped. To loop a water main is real simple, it's exactly what it sounds like, it's basically a circle of water, but when you shut off one, you can get water from another area. Most of our system is looped purposely for redundancy, so if I shut off some water here, I'm not turning the water off to the houses, I'm just isolating one problem, fixing it while they still have water from somewhere else. In this case, they don't have that because they only have the one water main. So as they're going through the process, they were, they've done some due diligence, it's my understanding that they've closed on the property, they started getting underground, they started removing some tanks, some old tanks that were in the ground from the previous buildings that were there, probably heating oil and things like that, and as they started going through the process, they said, hey, you know what, we're seeing some unknown expenses, so they wanted to come back to us and see if there's anything that we can do to offset some of their costs for the development. Now, we have an incentive policy, and Mike and I have been going back and forth with the incentive policy since we created it, so far, it's been, it's been very good that we have structure. The one thing we do have, though, is a caveat that if an unqualified use asks for an incentive, they still have the right to petition the village board. So this one may not be a straight unqualified use, this one was gray, so we said, okay, well, we're going to bring this to the board. What they're looking for, basically, is money to offset some of those unknown expenses. In this case, the cost of the water main connection is roughly $111,000. Now, per our policy, a qualified use they are bringing is vacant commercial site enhancement, so that means this is a vacant piece of land undeveloped or a dilapidated piece of land that needs to be redeveloped, so qualified use was, we allow incentives to rebuild those areas and build them up again. We also have qualified uses for restaurants. Gas and Wash has indicated that they have restaurant space for one, if not two, restaurant vendors, I think they already have one coffee vendor lined up, so there's point of sales for the coffee. Originally, we also look at retail centers because they're retail sales, because they're going to have a, quite a bit of retail sales anticipated from not only the gasoline, but from the convenience store. We took it off because gas stations in general are unqualified, so every gas station has sales tax on gas, every gas station has sales tax from a convenience store, so we decided to say, it's not a qualified use, it should have retail sales because it falls under the purview of a gas station, which is unallowed. The other thing we have is they have video gaming at their establishment, and so our policy says that no business with video gaming should receive an incentive. So we got this gray area where we have two unqualified uses, a gas station and a video gaming establishment, but we have qualified uses in the fact that it's a site redevelopment and it's a restaurant, that they will have restaurants available. We've done some preliminary research, there's several Gas and Washes going around, they do bring in a significant amount of sales tax revenue. So tonight, what's before you is a concept, there's no structure to any incentive agreement, tonight, it is purely whether or not based on our incentive policy, the board would like us to pursue an incentive request and actually come back with a formatted incentive agreement, and that would likely be either a TIF reimbursement for work done on-site, roughly in that amount of 111,000, or a sales tax reimbursement. Based on Jason's research, an average Gas and Wash, sales tax loan pulls in roughly about $100,000 a year to the municipality that they serve. So that's in front of you tonight, so once again, this is a gray area, so we brought it to the board, and they've, they've requested it, it's, we have some unqualified uses, we have some qualified uses, so we brought it to the board to decide whether or not you would like us to go forward with an incentive agreement, to bring back to you.
I think that, when I take a look at the use of this, I mean, the very fact that it has video gaming is an incentive in and of itself, that most of our businesses can't have access to, so that's going to give additional revenue as well. So I don't know if I'd be in favor of offering any incentive for this, just because, I mean, there's just, you know, two unqualified uses being designated within the construction, so I don't, we should be giving them anything.
Yeah, between that and the water that's going to be needed for the car wash, which is probably a large part of the issue, they're going to be making money off of that, so it doesn't really make sense for us to offer that incentive at this point.
Anyone else?
Steve, they're going to have to, you're going to, they're going to have to improve the water main regardless, right, because of the way it is connected to Asbury Gardens? Regardless of whether they get the incentive or not, they do have to do that, correct?
Yeah, that was a question that we, in light of this conversation, we wanted to verify that we were on solid ground in requesting an upgrade to the water system, and when, in speaking with Attorney Drendal, the idea is that in every production that we do, every time that there is a permit issued and we do our engineering review, the engineering review is what actually catches whether or not something can be built, it goes back to the trustees' comments about whether or not we have adequate water, it's the same thing. So, okay, someone got approved for a use, but until you see what's in the ground, you don't know exactly what's, what's there. Now, that water study we're doing actually has a full model part of it, so in the future, we'll be actually able to take projected water usage and run it through a model, and it should tell us if everything is copacetic. But in this case, yes, to your point, that is, that is the case.
I was just going to finish my comments. So I am not in favor, first of all, I did not vote to approve this particular development to begin with, so I would not be in favor, and the reason that I didn't vote for it primarily was, I don't like the placement of it, and secondarily, that they have video gaming. So my vote would be, no, I'm not in favor of giving them an incentive, video gaming is a large incentive, that was one of the things that they said, right, that they requested because that supports their business, so that's my position on it.
Do they know that this will be an issue with the water main prior to this whole setup?
No, not until they did the engineering review, and like I said, with Attorney Drendal, I did ask him, I said specifically, do we have the right to tell somebody they have to upsize a water main? And we do it all the time with developers, when they come in with a new development, and his, you know, based on our code, we have that right to say that, you know, we cannot, our water system cannot support this use, you got approved on paper for a use, but that doesn't mean the utility is actually 100% capable until the engineering review is done.
Yeah, so I'm with the no's. I think we set out the request or requirements that if it's a gas station, it's a no, so, you know, as much as they want to bring it to the board here, I think, to me, it's, you know, it's, it is what it is, and they can, they have to deal with that, I guess, as part of finding out about things, so it's a risk involved in, you know, business, so they got the slots, like several trustees said, and that's just, you know, so, yeah, it's no, so I just don't like them bringing things, people bringing things when we already said a gas station is not an incentive, and then we bring it up again, so it's like, I'm a no, so.
So Mike and I, this is for a future conversation, but about the incentive agreement, you know, based on some of the requests that we've had recently, we're getting requests more commonly now, it seems, even when we tell people that the use might not be qualified, but there's that caveat that they can still ask, so of course, you know, it's going to produce them to ask. So Mike and I are actually thinking about having a separate conversation, we think the policy is really good, and it's actually helping us have constructive conversations with businesses. One thing that we might want to add, though, is a caveat to when an unqualified use can actually petition the board, meaning never take that right away from them, but they still have to meet a minimum standard, and that could be that they have, now in this case, Gas and Wash does, but it has to have point of sales, where it generates sales case, Gas and Wash does, but it has to have point of sales, where it generates sales tax, or some kind of caveat.
Right, I think it makes it different for staff to operate when they got this whole thing, where they can come back to the board and, you know, ask, so. Anybody else?
Well, I do have a question. If they don't build and someone else builds, is that new entity going to have to do the same thing with the water main?
It depends on what that type of use is. So every use is different, and to trustee Christensen's point about water usage, depending on how much water they're using, because, and Brian can jump in, because he's better at the public work stuff, but, I mean, ultimately, they have to upsize a pipe just to service the property already, but then, the total amount of water that they're bringing, and the force and everything, the pressure, might mean that they have to actually loop the rest of it.
Yeah, it just creates so much water flowing through it that it could actually break the pipe, you wouldn't think so, but it, that's what it does, the force of water rushing through to like fight a fire, so if you're fighting a fire and your water main ruptures, you know, it doesn't, you lose, you lose all your water. So that's why, you know, you want to loop it like that as much as you can.
A good way to explain it would be this, if a development came in and they said, okay, I'm putting in a car wash, because this is a car wash, and I need X number of water, but my water main's only, and I'm just making up a number, let's say 6 inches, but it needs to be an 8-inch water main. Developers typically won't care about upsizing that, because they're specifically upsizing the pipe to benefit their business. What we catch in the engineering review is that even with that upsizing, what will that have on the effect of the system further down? You know, will their new impact create an impact on somebody else down lines? And that's where the engineering review says, whoa, it's creating an adverse effect here, we need to make sure that that's rectified.
And I think as of now, they fall underneath the gallons to be a high-water user, so that's what, we've looked at that, as far as what the car wash uses. So I mean, the numbers they gave us are under, but that's not to say, once they start operating, the water, you know, usage is higher, then we would then assess them an impact fee.
Sure. That's a good point, Brian, full circle, we have an ordinance that protects us too, so earlier we talked about water agreements, but the ordinance that's always in place allows that trigger for if any user crosses that threshold into a high-water user, it triggers a review.
Yeah. Okay. Any else? So we're at a no?
Yeah, well, everybody else said the same thing that I'm thinking.
It doesn't matter what we think.
Well, no, I guess so.
You guys made up your mind.
To me, the main two uses of that place is gas and gaming.
Yeah.